Recording.
Recording in progress.
Okay, members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs, please respond present when you hear your name. Trustee Una Clark.
Present.
Great. Trustee Sandra Wilken.
Present.
Trustee Michael Arvinides.
Present.
Trustee Mary Linares Garcia. Hugo, Professor Hugo Fernandez, a faculty rep.
Present.
Terrific. Professor Victoria Chevalier, the faculty alternate. Okay, Giovanni Becand, the student rep. You can see Giovanni. And I would like to introduce the new student alternate, Lennon Jacob.
Jacob, thank you.
Jacob, they sent it to me with a typo. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry for mispronouncing it. This public meeting of the City University Board Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs is now called to order. Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the open meetings law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website, as well as live on CUNY TV Channel 75. A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Daniel Lemmons.
Present.
Great. General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Terrific. Linda Grace, the Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement, and Special Counsel.
Present.
The interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
Terrific. President Jennifer Rabb, the COPS liaison.
Present.
Great. Deputy to the Vice Chancellor Ian James.
Present.
Terrific. Reginald Blake, the interim Associate Provost and Dean of Curriculum and Research at City Tech.
Present.
Maria Vidal, manager of the Urban Mail Initiative.
Present.
Ashton Holmes, Director of the, excuse me, Urban Mail Leadership Academy.
Present.
Terrific. And Jorge Alguer, University Assistant Director at CUNY.
Present.
Terrific. So that's, I'm going to turn it over to you, Trustee Clark, unless you want me to keep going.
You can keep going.
Okay, so the next item one, we're going to turn it to Vice Chancellor Maybank to give her report.
Thank you, Gail, and thank you, Trustee Clark, as well. So first off, Happy New Year, everyone. It's good to see you all. And I trust that it will be a prosperous and healthy year for us all. So I have a few areas I just want to provide some updates on. I'll begin with student mental health. During the 2020 to 21 academic year, over 25,000 students have utilized counseling services throughout CUNY with nearly 77,000 clinical services provided. These numbers are consistent with previous years indicating the success with which mental health counseling transitioned to telemental health. Nearly 1,000 students have accessed the crisis text line for crisis counseling by text message during 2021, with the top three presenting issues being school, anxiety, and depression. Over 35,000 CUNY students, staff, and faculty are enrolled in the 10-Minute Mind, the daily mindfulness program available for stress management, relaxation, and anxiety reduction. There are currently 241 CUNY staff and students enrolled in telehealth, in the Telehealth Certification Institute course, which provides continuing education and best practices for the provision of mental health services via telehealth platforms. In terms of immigrant student success, we are excited about the launch of a new unit and the appointment of its interim director under the Office of Student Inclusion Initiatives. Dr. Cynthia Carvajal is the inaugural leader of immigrant student success. She joins the central S A E M team from John Jay College and is a scholar with the lived experience of having navigated the undocumented student experience. Dr. Carvajal, with the support of Denise Vivar from John Jay College and Jesus Perez from Brooklyn College, has launched the College Immigrant Ambassador Program, a collaboration between CUNY and the D and DOE, in the New York City DOE. The program has engaged 39 student ambassadors from across the CUNY campuses. These ambassadors will work in 22 DOE high schools and a variety of community-based organizations. They will receive a stipend of $8,000 for the year. Through this collaboration, the CUNY ambassadors will serve as informed thought partners to educators and as post-secondary education resources to undocumented and immigrant student families and communities. Among the 39 ambassadors, 12 languages are spoken, allowing a greater cultural connection and family engagement in expanding the education opportunities for a greater population of students. We are awarding a second round of American Rescue Plan Act funds, or ARPA, as we've come to call it, to our students later this month. We had not dispersed the full amount for the fall semester, so we are able to offer additional funds to eligible students. These grants are significantly smaller, but in times like these, every little bit helps. Awards for full-time students will be around $170 and around $83 for part-time students. I want to share with you this evening a little bit about where we are with our student vaccine mandate, but not from the number perspective, from the person perspective. As you know, August 23rd, with the approval of the Pfizer vaccine by the FDA, we triggered a 45-day final deadline for CUNY students to be fully vaccinated and for their vaccine information to be uploaded and approved in CUNY First. Beginning in the summer, the Office of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management Staff assumed responsibility for training and guiding the work of the Campus Location Vaccination Authority Liaisons, or LVAs. As they were established in university policy, the LVAs have and will continue to process vaccination verification for students. I highlight the work of the almost 300 individuals who do the work of verifying and approving the documentation associated with the mandate. They are frontline workers in this effort and have shouldered the weight of the frustrations and anxieties often shouted at them as they guide students and family members through this terrain. They are the problem solvers who have helped us develop a system that is improved with their input. They have made a difference in all we do, whether it's through the medical exemptions that have to be approved or the religious exceptions that have been approved. We have seen them do amazing things and to stay focused in getting it done. With that, I'll pause and wait for the next part of the presentation, which will be done by a cadre of our colleagues who I'll introduce shortly.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Clark. We're going to make a motion for the, if you could make a motion to the approval of the action item, which are the minutes? I don't know if we can hear it with you. We can make them, if somebody will make a motion?
Yeah, I make, Arvinides, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Michael. Great. And does anybody want to second the motion?
I will second the motion.
Great. Terrific. So we'll now vote, and if there's anybody, only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the minutes carry. So there are no more action items, so that'll make it very straightforward. So we are now going to turn back to Vice Chancellor Maybank for an update on the CUNY Black Male Initiative and the campus programs.
Okay, I didn't mute myself, so I guess I'm still open here. So today, we bring you the voices of our students in a slightly different manner. We bring to you the Black Male Initiative, which is a program of CUNY that was established in 2005. And I want to introduce to you this evening a number of people who have been working in this area and doing the work that has made a difference for so many of our students. I don't want to steal the thunder by saying a whole lot of anything about how many and where and what. I'm going to leave that to them. But I will tell you that I wore my peacock necklace tonight because I am peacock proud of what they do and how they get it done. So I will introduce to you our three presenters, who are amazing leaders in this area, and I will present them, I will introduce them to you in the order that they will present. So Maria Vidal, who is the manager for the Urban Mail Initiative at John Jay, will speak first. Then we will hear from Ashton Holmes, who is the Director of the Urban Mail Leadership Academy at Borough of Manhattan Community College. And batting cleanup will be Dr. Robert Blake, who is the Director and Interim Associate Provost and Dean of Curriculum and Research at New York City Tech, where the program is the City Tech Black Male Program. So I turn it over to Maria.
I'm secretary. Can I share my screen?
I'm sorry, and I was supposed to let you know as well.
Okay, so in order to do that, I'm going to make you a co-host, Ian, so just bear with me a minute.
No problem.
Sorry about that.
Vice Chancellor Maybank, I think your earlier presentation about the Wellness Initiative is great and something that's desperately needed. I just wanted to know if that 10-Minute Mind is open to ease. Well, I could use some stress reduction.
We will get a link to you so that you can use that.
Okay, Ian, you should be good to go. There you go. Great.
Good, Ian.
All right. You go ahead now. Take it away.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year, everyone, and good evening. I'm Maria Vidal, and I'm the manager for the Urban Mail Initiative at John Jay College. For decades, retention, oh, we can stay on this first slide. Thank you. For decades, retention and graduation initiatives and, excuse me, retention and graduation rates have been declining for men of color. And last fall, the National Student Clearinghouse reported that from spring 2019 to spring 2021, the number of men in college fell by more than 535,000, while the number of women in college declined by 154,000. We will continue to focus on initiatives to increase retention and graduation rates by fulfilling our mission, which is to improve the academic performance for students who identify as men of color enrolled at John Jay by providing mentorship and exposure to experiential learning opportunities while aligning personal strengths with degree programs. Next slide, please. Thank you. We focus on building a strong relationship with our students while empowering them through a strengths-based narrative in order to utilize an intrusive advisement approach for our mentoring program. The Peer Peer Mentoring Program, called the Peer Advocates Mentoring Program, is financially supported by our college's student activity. The peer advocates, which are the mentors, earn $1,000 stipends in exchange for a mentoring cohort of three students each, and mentees receive a wide range of UMI swag or incentives. And in the pre-pandemic days, trips to conferences such as the National Black Male Retreat hosted by the V Ohio State University. Peer advocates are responsible for working with their mentees individually to create individual development plans for each academic year for which focus on, where they focus on their personal, academic, and career goals. We believe it's important to partner with offices on campus, which include but are not limited to J-Express Services, the Scholarship Office, the Wellness Center, the Center for Student Involvement and Leadership, and the Office of Fellowships and Special Opportunities. More recently, we actually partnered with the Center for Career and Professional Development and other offices to launch the Alumni Mentoring Program. Since the pandemic started, we noticed that our students are particularly juniors and seniors are actually more motivated by mentorship from an alum. Mentees are seeking to gain insight, insight on the alumni experience in the field of interest, in their field of interest, real-world advice, job-shattering opportunities, and even internship guidance. We also realized that the peer mentoring experience is actually best in person, but we found a few online modalities which have enhanced the virtual mentoring experience, which include an online project management tool called Monday.com and of course Zoom. Next slide, please. Thank you. We have a number of initiatives in place for student, for academic student success. Aside from our physical space, which includes the UMI Learning Lab, which is equipped with 25 desktop computers, printer, 80 lockers for students in the mentoring program, and two small study spaces with dry erase boards. UMI has partnered with the Academic Learning Centers on campus by receiving monthly attendance logs for the students in our mentoring program who sign up and/or attend tutoring sessions and by hiring a tutor in the Writing Center specifically for UMI students. Students in the mentoring program whose GPA is below 2.3 and below are actually enrolled in the academic intervention program called the UMI Early Alert Program. We also find that it's important to connect students to experiential learning opportunities, pipeline programs, or any professional development opportunities that align with their career interests or major. This way, they're gaining experience and learning more about themselves along the way. Next slide, please. Thank you. Students are able to celebrate their successes or seek support amongst their peers in the UMI Student Lounge, a space designed for black men by black men, equipped with lounge seating, motivational wall decals, a small refrigerator and a microwave for their meals that they can bring from home, and a small library with textbooks donated by their peers and some fiction and nonfiction books to help escape reality until their next class. Even though students can't wait to see each other again in the UMI Student Lounge, for now, our events are held on Zoom. And this year, we'll utilize constant contact to increase student engagement via email and Signal Line to increase student engagement via text messages. Next slide, please. Thank you. It has been my pleasure for the past decade to see my students enroll in doctoral programs, enroll and graduate with their master's degrees, enroll and graduate from law schools, enroll in dual-dup programs like M.D.-Ph.D. programs, become attorneys, social workers, law enforcement officers, educators, spouses, and parents. In order to continue to pave the way for incoming students, UMI needs more full-time personnel. The staff consists of one full-time administrator and three part-time assistants. And with additional full-time administrators, UMI would be able to have a greater impact on all students who identify as men of color at John Jay. We would also like to conduct research and gather data on students enrolled in UMI, gather quantitative data in an effort to gain more funding opportunities, and of course, ongoing assessment of the programs, student success, and keeping in contact with alum and their career successes. Also, every student who identifies as a man of color should be designated as a UMI student on CUNY First so that they're able to take advantage of UMI services from the moment they're accepted to John Jay. This concludes my presentation for this evening. We are thankful for the New York City Council for their continued financial support to CUNY BMI throughout the years, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ashton.
Thank you, Trustee Clark.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashton Holmes, and I'm wishing everybody, first and foremost, a blessed, healthy, and happy New Year. I'm here to talk a little bit about the BMCC Urban Mail Leadership Academy, or everybody calls it UMLA, or the UMLA family. It is the CUNY BMI-affiliated program at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, and I've had the pleasure of serving as its director for about 11 years now. Time really flies when you're having fun. As Maria said, we all know, and I don't think it's news to anybody, that the situation in terms of enrollment retention rates for black and Latino men has, you know, enrollment rates have declined, retention has declined, but this is not necessarily a new problem. And I just really want to commend, you know, BMI for being one of the first to sort of recognize this problem and putting real intention and resources behind their efforts to really boost the retention and graduation rates for black and Latino men. And it's an honor for me to be a part of the CUNY BMI. UMLA, our mission, we're firmly committed to the goal of increasing the enrollment, retention, and graduation rates from groups that are severely underrepresented in higher education, particularly men of color. And we do that through numerous ways, if you can, Ian. One, the cornerstone of our program is peer mentorship. So mentoring is infused in all of our activities and everything we do. We have one of, that's very near and dear to my heart. I believe one of the best peer mentoring programs is called the Each One, Reach One Peer Mentoring Program. And I know Trustee Clark knows about it because she's keynoted a couple of our end-of-year ceremonies where we celebrated all the success of the students. But it was a program that actually was formed by students for students. So the students themselves recognized the issue of blackmail retention and success, and they formulated this group. And then UMLA was fortunate enough to take on the mentoring program after a number of years to really get it seasoned and established. So it's a real honor for me to serve as being sort of the leader of that mentorship group. We provide leadership training to our students. Our aim is to get them transfer-ready, to get them career-ready. We understand that they want to do well at BMCC, but probably the more important thing is what comes after BMCC. Are they ready for college at the next level? Are they ready to jump into the workforce and make a real difference in their lives and their communities and take things to the next level? And that's the real training and resources that we aim to provide our students with. We provide our students with academic support, tutoring, academic coaching, connecting them to different supports, resources around the college. And what we really do is we end up being ambassadors for all of the wonderful and great services that exist throughout BMCC, but the students, for whatever reason, don't always know about them or don't always pick them up. We serve as that gateway, an introduction for our black and brown students. We connect them to employment opportunities. We host workshops each and every single week, which range in topics from everything, from academic success, so how to be an A student, to how to grab that internship, to entrepreneurial workshops, to mental health workshops, or to just fun stuff. You know, we've gone on trips and we've gone zip lining, paintballing. We've taken trips out to DC where we toured all the black colleges and hit up the Museum of African-American History and Culture. And the whole idea, everything we do has a family feel, a real camaraderie, and it's about the students developing relationships with each other that are, you know, life-lasting and so they can grow and progress together. It really is an each-one, reach-one, each-one, teach-one type of community that we're looking to build. And for that reason, we have a strong alumni program as well. So our alumni stay engaged, they stay connected, and oftentimes, our alumni are the ones that are mentoring and providing a great example for our current students at BMCC. We serve roughly between 300 and 400 students per year. The number sort of fluctuates. This year, we actually served the most, or this fall, rather, we had our biggest fall ever. After, after our down year during the 2020-21 year, we're starting this year off incredibly strong, which is in our highest record numbers ever. We had, we served 374 students, which is, which is really good for us. Ian, if you can, next slide. As far as our outcomes, we had our Office of Institutional Research at BMCC ran a study on UMLA. They looked at outcomes over a six-year period. And what they really wanted to do was compare students who were participating in UMLA to a similar group, similar demographics, that were not. And what we found was that students in UMLA, whether they're men or women, a lot of people have the misconception that we're only, you know, serving men. We also have women and other groups in our program as well, although it's catered more so to black and Latino men. But UMLA students outperform non-UMLA students across the board when it comes to retention rates, when it comes to graduation rates, when it comes to the amount of credits that they're taking and passing. And, and so we're real just proud to, to, to be a part of, you know, the students and their success. And if we go forward, and because of that success, we've actually been pretty fortunate. Ian, if you can. You know, we were recently awarded $250,000 grant by the Robinhood Foundation. So I guess they liked what we did, and they are providing some additional funds to help bolster up our program. And due to that funding, we're able to hire a full-time assistant director. And our whole aim over the next two to three years is to double the amount of students served, significantly increase the amount of mentorship we do, develop a formalized alumni network and mentoring program, introduce some additional services to UMLA just to get students better connected and supported. And we are also awarded a $125,000 two-year grant by the BMCC President's Innovation Excellence Fund to implement a brand-new program that we call B-UMLA. And B-UMLA is definitely near and dear to my heart, and I think it's a very innovative program. It's a collaboration between UMLA and the BMCC Business Management Department in an effort to eradicate the equity gaps, starting with the business majors, but we're going to spread it all over the colleges, you'll see shortly. If you can, next slide, Ian. Just want to share a couple of words about B-UMLA because I really think this model is kind of the future direction that we want to take within UMLA in terms of making a big, you know, scalable, large impact to really shift the dynamic of black and brown male retention. So with this program, like I said, it's a collaboration between UMLA and the Business Management Department. And what we're doing is we're embedding the resources and supports, the mentoring, all the good stuff I talked about two slides ago. We're embedding that in the actual major itself, you know, for these, for these business majors. So that covers five majors within the business department, and we're embedding these supports directly into the major so the students don't have to quote-unquote "travel." They don't have to, they don't have to go find us. We're coming to them with the resources, the communities, the support, the workshops. And our whole aim is to, you know, increase the retention rate. Right now, they're not the greatest for black and Latino men, 43%. In our first year, we want to push them up 10%, and then we want to go higher than that in subsequent years. In addition, and part of B-UMLA is, and also a new initiative called the BMCC Baruch Academy. And so what this does is it's a seamless transfer program, basically, between BMCC and Zicklin. So students who are part of this program, as they join in their first, in their freshman year at BMCC, they receive mentoring and services and support, not only from BMCC's side, but also from the Baruch's side. So we have Baruch faculty involved and Baruch peer matches involved, and so they're getting all of this support. And then if they meet the requirements, which they all will, when they go to Baruch, they don't even have to apply. They're already going to be basically accepted into the Zicklin School as a part of this program. So it's something that we're very excited about, and we piloted it this semester, and we really want to scale that up and really bring it to, and bring it, you know, bring it to a much larger scale. And our whole aim with B-UMLA is not to create a program, but to create an actual model. It's to create a model that works for black and brown men, that we're able to scale up and we're able to spread throughout BMCC and perhaps even throughout CUNY. So that's our mission. I appreciate your time and attention that you gave me. And I'm going to let Dr. Blake take it away. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, my dear friend. Then I see someone's hand. I'm not sure if, Ian, how that, would you acknowledge that person? Sure, just go ahead.
President Rabb, Jennifer, did you have a question?
I actually just a comment. We're a little jealous of your relationship with Baruch. So I'm wondering if we could talk a little after or tomorrow about replicating our similar program with Hunter. Maybe, you know, we also have a business certificate, but maybe something else in the liberal arts or health professions. But we'd love to replicate what you're doing with Baruch. So thank you, Gail. Just wanted to put that little plug in for more connections. little plug in for more connections between the community colleges and the seniors.
Indeed.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Now, I'll put some money in it too, so there you go.
Madam President, Rob, I like that.
We always appreciate you and your surprises, President Rob.
So, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for the honor and the privilege of talking with you a little bit about the Black Male Initiative Program at the New York City College of Technology. It is the STEM-designated BMI Program within CUNY. And from this cover slide, we try to make the point about STEM. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, you'll see an electron cloud around a nucleus. And if you look on the right-hand side, you'll see the electromagnetic spectrum and the piece that we call the visible spectrum from 0.4 to 0.7 micrometers that we can see with our naked eye. And what's in the middle is a trip we took to the Brookhaven National Laboratory out in Upton, Long Island. So for the next few moments, I want to share with you some of the things that we have been doing at City Tech for the last, oh, maybe 17 years. Next slide, please. Our BMI program at City Tech was one of the first programs to be funded within the BMI system. It started in 2005. We were one of the six programs that was funded. We had about 15 students. And we have grown over the years. And last count, we had, we have served over 8,000 students. I have been fortunate to be leading the program since its very inception, and what an honor it has been. From all of the students we have served, 60% of them are males or were males and 40% female. So when we use the term "Black Male Initiative," it's really a misnomer, because we really are inclusive of all gender and all of the demographics. Next slide, please. The goals of our program are the following. We are focusing on STEM, and we're focusing on STEM for African American and Hispanic males at City Tech. And so our goal is to increase the enrollment and the success in STEM of our African American and Hispanic males. Our mission is to develop strong, sustainable interventions that promote access and success of African American and Hispanic males in STEM. And the vision we have is to aid City Tech in becoming a model institution that values and fosters accessible, high-quality student support programs for African American and Hispanic males in STEM. The goal is to increase the quality and the quantity of African American Hispanic male who pursue degrees, undergrad degrees and grad degrees in STEM disciplines. And we want to make sure, what we've done at City Tech is that all the things that we do, everything focuses on academics. So we are an acadcentric BMI program. We focus on getting our students through the STEM disciplines. Next slide, please. The cornerstone and the guiding principles and strategies that we employ at City Tech are the following. We are engaged in culturally competent peer-to-peer mentoring, socio-emotional programming, diversity recruitment, and academic enhancements. Next slide. The way the program is structured can be seen from this slide. We put our students in the center, and then we bring the interventions to them that would help them to be successful. So we have faculty mentoring, we have peer mentoring, and we have community mentoring. In the faculty mentoring, we have graduate school preparation and capstone workshops. We have STEM exposure trips, like the one you saw on the cover slide. We have leadership seminars. We engage our students in STEM research, and we expose our students to STEM conferences. For the peer mentoring component, we have STEM PAL workshops. PAL stands for Peer-Assisted Learning. That's where peer-to-peer mentoring and learning takes, take place. We have STEM tutoring. We have a BMI club. And we have a barber shop and a beauty shop. And the barber shop was a safe space we created for young men to talk to each other, to share with one another in an environment that is free from criticism or free from anything that's demeaning or degrading. When the sisters heard that we had a barber shop going on, they said they wanted a beauty shop. And so we created a beauty shop for them, and they did the very same thing. Whatever happened in the barber shop stays in the barber shop. Whatever happens in the beauty shop stays in the beauty shop. And we've been doing this now successfully for quite a number of years. And in the third realm, we have this community mentoring piece. And that's where we, we take our students after equipping them with all the STEM knowledge that they have, and we allow them to go into the communities and into the neighborhoods and to be of help. So you'll find that our young men and young women go to junior high schools and tutor, or high schools and tutor, or they're involved, they're involved in community work, building churches, or cleaning out the parks, or teaching young people how to do STEM, as I'll show you at the end, near, at the end of the presentation. So they're involved in service learning and academic outreach as well. Next slide, please. Just a quick snapshot of how we break down the program. We have academic support on the, on the left, left column. And under that, you'll find the name of two professors. All the professors' names that you see here are professors who are on the BMI, City Tech BMI Task Force. And these are the different components of the program that they are in charge of. So we have STEM tutoring and peer-led team learning workshops, graduate school preparation, and we have a whole list of professors who guide and nurture this component. Then we have STEM experiences, and our students are involved in research and STEM lecture and conferences and exposure trips. And, and they get fellowships and internships, and they prepare, they're prepared for graduate school fairs. And we have a set of professors who help them in that regard as well. Then we have the community outreach. We have a group of students on the DOE that we work with. We work with preparing students for the SAT and with science fairs. And we work with the 500 men, which is a group of men here in Brooklyn that will do community work, and they participate in breast cancer walk. So we have our students participating not only in the STEM academic components, but they go out into the neighborhoods and the communities. Next slide, please. Then we have recruitment. Again, these are folks at City Tech who are part of our task force. The recruitment piece, looking at the website, the open house events and advertisement. We have a BMI club and the beauty barber shop and the program dissemination, and how we evaluate our program, and also how we try to find external funding for our program, which we've been successful in doing over the last few years. So the program is structured and decompartmentalized and is supervised by professors on the BMI Task Force that help us to provide a very comprehensive and holistic program for our students. Next slide, please. So what have we done over the last several years or so? We have some accomplishments to share with you. Over the past 13 years, the program has produced at City Tech six valedictorians. And all the program and campus can boast this. Six valedictorians, three salatatorians, four CUNY All-Stars, and one Fulbright scholar. We're the ones who hosted the 13th Annual CUNY BMI Conference. The title was "Diversifying the STEM Field: Exposing and Promoting Pathways." And our keynote speaker was Dr. Sylvester James Gates. And if you know anything about him, he's an African American. He's one of the top five theoretical physicists in the whole world. So it was a pleasure to have him be our keynote speaker. We have had our students conduct research at Stanford University, Johns Hopkins, Rutgers, Columbia, and at the Brookhaven National Laboratory. Our BMI students have gone on the Earthwatch Research Campaign, and they've done research in Mexico and in Canada. In 2007, we were one of only nine national programs that was given a Model Replication Institution designation. And this was given to us by NASA, by the National Science Foundation, and by the Institute for Higher Education Policy. And the last bullet of mine, some of the schools that we've worked with in Brooklyn as we try to help our young people get on the track and to get back on a good footing academically. Some other things to point out quickly. We support about 50 students each, each year in research, STEM research at the college. Annually, our students make presentations at prestigious conferences, local and national conferences. We go to the MAA, which is the Mathematical Association Conference. We go to the American Meteorological Society Conference, AGU. All these are prestigious national conferences that our young people not only go to and participate, but they have won awards. After working with students at NIH, working and studying NIH, we have two former students of NIH who are now in med school. One school, one student is now a medical doctor. We have one physician assistant. We have three pharmacists and 21 nurses. Twenty-five former BMI students have now earned their master's degree. Four former BMI students are now near the dissertation defense stage of their PhD candidacies. One is at University of Albany, one is at Columbia, and two are out on the island at Stony Brook. Next slide, please. We talked about the service learning component of our program. Here is one of our students in one of our summer camp, worked with young men in Bedford-Stuyvesant, and we were doing research using satellites and drones to study land surface temperature in, in Bedford-Stuyvesant. So we take our students after we've trained them, we take them out and help them teach them, help them to teach young folks how to get involved in STEM. The young men you see on the left, they were listening to one of our students, collecting temperature from different surfaces, and then being taught how to make a simple graph relating the temperature to the surface that they, they took the temperature from, getting the thermal signature. So our students are involved in service learning. And the final slide, please. So here are some of the participants. Here are some of the things we've done. Over on the left, these are, there's a trip we took to a park. The two images on the bottom on the left are images, one is on campus, the other one is at the Smithsonian in DC. In the middle, on top, we took a trip to Albany to campaign for funding for CUNY. And in the bottom is a image from one of the site visits we had from our CUNY BMI director. So we have created a program that has been very sustainable and replicable and adaptable, and our young men and young women have been thriving for the last 17 years. And thanks to the support of the City Council, we're able to continue this work, and we look forward to doing greater works in the future. Thank you so very much for listening, as we presented this peak to our BMI program at City Tech.
Trustee Avanidis put his hand up midway your presentation, so I'm sure he has something he wants to share or ask.
I was really impressed, so I had to chime in and just say how amazing this, this is all, very impressive. And I'm glad that Ashton, I'm glad that there's connection tonight. Thank you, President Rob. I also think this is ripe for Small Business Services. And in case you're not aware, we have a commissioner slash trustee who just took over that job at the Small Business Services. But that would definitely be, I think the SCORE program could be somewhere that we might be able to get some more resources towards you. And Maria, you said you wanted to quantify your student success. I think that the data is available. You might just need a grad student to put that together as a, as a program. And I'd love to help you in any way, shape, and form that we can with that. So that was just my comments and, and really just an amazing program, programs. And thank you for, for showing, showcasing this to us tonight.
We thank you for your support. You know, this is what it's about, because when we look at the declining numbers of our Black and Latinx men, we need to figure out what we're doing and how we are responding to that, to capture their hearts, to capture their minds, and to capture their futures and their destinies. And that's what this program is about. So that is why we brought it to you today. I don't know if you want me just to continue and do the enrollment update, or if there were other questions or comments from?
Vice Chancellor, I just wanted to congratulate you for the direction that you're taking our students, so that we can have a full picture of what our students are doing, where they are, and how we can be more supportive of them and their aspirations. So I am just so delighted of the reports that were given. I know all three campuses well have visited them. I'm usually at BMCC at least twice a year. I've been funding BMCC since I was in the City Council, and I make sure that I gather my, my income, or, or getting interest on the investment that I make, and I make sure that the students are benefiting from the investment that is being made in, in our institution. So I'm honored that you've done this tonight, and we still want to make sure we focus on our students. So student enrollment and how we can enhance all of that is important to the work that we do as a committee. Thank you, Madam Vice Chancellor.
Thank you, Trustee Clark. Should I continue? And, oh, I see two hands. Wait, I see still Trustee Avanidis. Is that from before, or are you having something new?
Oh.
Okay. And Trustee Wilkin?
In, in hearing about the program and what the successes are and the challenges are, if it, it, it obviously is a focus that is so important for the CUNY students and the students that are in the program, and the success that you have been able to have at this point. I was hoping that the, our wonderful Chair, Chair Clark, would give us an opportunity to continue at another time, if you can come back and give us updates and recommendations on how we can further assist, further assist you.
We'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Chancellor, you may continue.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to jump right in. Ian, I sent you the presentation since you had privilege. I figure, why try to switch it? So if Ian will get my presentation going for me, I would appreciate it. And I'm just going to do a quick few slides on where we are with enrollment. I'm starting with the fact that we had record degree, degrees awarded in this past year, because I think that that's something that is worth drawing attention to as often as we can and in as many ways as we can. The next slide, please, shows you the actual numbers of degrees awarded over the course of the past 10 years. And so you see where we are, where we were this year, at 59,295. It took us over the 500,000 mark of degrees awarded through CUNY. Next, please. So our preliminary numbers for the fall semester have us at 239,817 students, and that number shows increases in the fall for six of our senior colleges, and increases over 10 years for seven of our senior colleges. Next. When we look at the trends in our total enrollment, we did a 10-year, we did a one-year and then a 10-year look. And so if you will pay attention to the preliminary column, you'll see that our enrollment for senior colleges, including the comprehensives, was at 170,358. For the comprehensive colleges alone, it was 30,204,000 students in enrollment. Our community college total, 69,459 for that total that was already identified. You'll see the differences there from 20, from fall 2020 to, and from fall 2011, 10 years prior. And you see that, yes, there are declines, and we are trying to determine how best to address those issues in a pandemic when we are realizing that students are not going to college necessarily. When we track the students who are coming out of DOE schools, we can't identify them as having gone elsewhere. We need to figure out what their decisions are, and we're working with DOE to get a better sense of that, so that we know how to address the enrollment issues of our DOE students. As we look to spring, already over 20,500 first-time and transfer students have decided to join the CUNY family for the spring 2022 semester. Next. This slide will, just shows you that we had a total of 76,866 applications from both transfer and new students from 36,516 individuals. And that's where the 20,563 commitments have come. Next, please. This is a focused look on freshman enrollment. 6,000 of that 26,965 are from our freshman population, where there are 29,257 applications from 12,911 individuals. Next, please. Transfers are driving the day. We have 47,609 applications from 23,704 unique individuals and 13,500 and 13,598 commitments. Next. When we take an early glimpse at what is happening for fall 2022, we see that we are, from the comparable period in '21, we see that the numbers for fall show increases in unique applicants, applications, and numbers of students making a commitment already to enroll. And so we know that we already have 356 students for fall. And I think that's my last slide. Thank you. So I tried to get through that as quickly as possible, knowing the night is far spent.
Thank you so very much. Are there any comments, um, from our committee members? And from our presenters?
You see my hand?
Yes, uh-huh, I saw your hand.
So Vice Chancellor, I had made a request last year about getting a faculty governance, uh, person on your team to work on enrollment. Has there been any progress in that?
We have not done that as yet, but we, I do remember you asking about that, Professor Hernandez. And we will, uh, make certain to incorporate someone in that process. We do talk with, uh, folks from the Faculty Senate, and so we can certainly make that happen.
Yeah, and, and something else, which is that, uh, the, at least at the executive committee level and meeting with faculty governance leaders, uh, numbers for, uh, the enrollment trends, uh, going back as far as spring 2021. We'd love as mu- many of those numbers as possible disaggregated because, uh, while we see that, you know, for example, Hunter did quite well last semester, but then LaGuardia, Kingsborough, did not. And, uh, so when you look at it, it's just a, it's just a, you know, an entire university, uh, five percent doesn't look so bad, but when you start seeing that individual colleges are suffering particularly, uh, it's, it's disconcerting. And one of the greatest concerns is around the common app, that the senior colleges get their pick of the litter and that community colleges basically have to take what's left, uh, and some colleges over-enrolled, uh, whether it was out of fear or whether it was out of the new ways that they evaluate students. And, uh, you know, we're hurting, uh, at the community college levels and some of the other colleges. So I hope that's something all that we can look at.
So I'm, I was gonna ask what you meant by disaggregated, but I hear you. You want the college-specific numbers is what you're asking for?
We love all the numbers. You can't believe that. We've got some math people and they love numbers, and they like to break it down as, as they do with budgets. They wanna see the numbers as far as, you know, enrollment levels, uh, for, broken down by semester, by colleges. And, uh, so we could, you know, take a look at it and see the trends as well. And maybe faculty can play some role in helping to, uh, improve enrollment at the university.
While the numbers are preliminary, we try not to release them, but the, certainly the ones that you have asked for back from, for spring of '21, um, that's a, a set of numbers that are set. They, it's usually the following semester, toward the end of the following semester, when we are no longer in the preliminary phase, but into the, the set numbers that we are reporting to, um, the various entities, iPads and others. So we can, we can certainly.
And before we go, I wanted to, um, say a special thank you to this evening presenters from each of the colleges that came. Um, it's both enlightening and encouraging, um, the work that you're doing. And please know that for us and student affairs, whatever we need to do to enhance, to support, and to encourage, that we will always be there for the colleges. But for those of you who presented tonight, you were well-prepared. And thank you so very much for giving us a clear picture of what's happening.
You're here.
Okay, then if there's nothing else, do you want to, uh, take, make a motion, Trustee Clark, to adjourn?
Yeah, uh, there, there being no further items on the agenda, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Armin.
The meeting is adjourned.
Happy night to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Evening, everyone.
Thanks.